The Parker Town Council at 7:02 PM. All council members are present. We are heavy tonight on special presentations, but it's a good night for some special presentations. So I'm going to ask Rabbi Mints and Rabbi Simon to join me down front here. And that's the camera so you can tell this is when that's high. So Rabbi Mints, a good friend of mine, just had his eighth son, Levi, a month ago. So his wife didn't join us tonight, but we send her our wishes and he's got a busy family. Like you said, growing a community, one at a time. You don't have to take it on yourself, though. So, you know, I think, you know, the elephant in the room, we have a little bit of family business to take care of. So this past weekend in Parker, something happened that is not about Parker, and it's certainly not what any of us believe and what any of us know to be true. So Rabbi, I want to give you a chance to talk. I want to read a statement, and this statement comes from the entire council. So we, as a council, speak with one voice, and that comes through the mayor. So no one is out, you know, making individual comments and stuff, but we all feel exactly the same way. So I just, I wrote it down, and I usually can speak better, but Rabbi, I got to tell you, I'm so pissed off, and I know all my fellow council members are joining that if this happens, and then we even have to do this in Parker. But I want to read this to you. So the town council finds these actions to be abhorrent and knows these activities are taking place across the Denver metro, across the nation, and probably, quite honestly, across the world. Parker is not a place of division, as you all know. Parker's that hometown where people come together to help each other out, but not tear each other down. As a coincidence, I'm so glad that you are here tonight, because I think you have probably one of the best perspectives of how Parker and your faith and your congregation have come together time over time over time, to really work together to bridge the gaps between faith, between cultures, and really just come together. So I just, in that spirit, I want to tell you that we are, we absolutely can't believe this happened in Parker. We're disgusted by it, but we do look forward out of this. We do look forward to working with you for educational opportunities, for cultural opportunities, and really to share the information about your congregation and what it's all about. You know, I think if anything out of this can come, is that moment where we say, this was the moment where we grew closer, we grew tighter, and we grew together on board. So Rabbi, I'll turn it over to you.
Wow, thank you, thank you. It's so special to be here. I really thank you all from the bottom of my heart. I'm speaking for myself, but really for so many in the community who reached out over the last few days. I just thought of what the mayor said earlier. Yes, we did have our eighth child last month, and I'm not here just because I was looking for a reason to get out of the house. I was, I'm here because I'm so happy to be here, and it's truly an honor, and so special to be here. I want to just echo what you said inside the clear, is I've been here, I think it was in this very neighborhood by Mayor Casciano, but I can still say I have a blessed memory, the former mayor, when he had his first swearing-in, I was the rabbi who did the invocation.
Evocation.
And I've been at Parker so many times, for individual events, for families, with the community, and all right since 2003, and never ever, I only experienced love, respect, compassion from people of all walks of life and backgrounds, and I've only found that from a different, the mayor, the council members, and really thank you so much for stepping up and what you're doing. I want to just quote, you know, Judaism as a special quote, but I believe it's really a universal quote, that says, "Ma'at ar docha harvei hoshan," which means, "A little bit of light dispels a lot of darkness." And the way we get rid of darkness is not by engaging with it, but by responding with light. If something dark happened, I don't even represent Parker anywhere, like you mentioned, it's really around, you know, the country, around the world. And I could say, as a now, almost 20 years of proud Colorado, when I'm a New Yorker, and, you know, from Brooklyn originally, and Brooklyn, which is one of the largest Jewish communities in the world, I could say, and my wife agreed with me, you know, which is somebody special, is that we, I experienced more antisemitism in New York, and I think most people listen, anywhere in Colorado, throughout Douglas County, I live, you know, not far from here, and Parker's always been a place of loving and unity, and I look forward to, you know, like you said, bringing us even more closer, and we respect people of all backgrounds, let's respond with light, you know, not engaging the darkness with goodness and kindness, and that's really what Judaism, really, we're all God's children, religious, nonreligious, regardless of religion or background affiliation, everybody's a candle, everybody's a flame, and everybody can share warmth and light to make this world a better place in their own special ways. So it's, it's an honor for us to be here tonight, and I look forward to working together to see how we can respond together with light, dispelling the darkness.
Awesome, awesome. Look forward to it. Okay, but no way out, we got the real stuff to do. And I'm going to ask Councilmember Hefta to join me down here. So this nomination for this award actually comes from Councilmember Hefta, and it is, "This is to commend Rabbi Mints and obviously Rabbi Simon," and they did mention Indy in here as the...
The real boss.
The real boss, absolutely. "The staff and congregation of the Shabbat Jewish Center of South Metro Denver, Colorado, for their outstanding contributions to the residents of Parker and surrounding community members. Your charitable contributions to those in need and exceptional children and youth programs have served Parker residents and the South Metro Denver area with great distinction. These actions reflect great credit upon both the rabbis, the staff, and congregation of the Jewish community." Laura, did you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank in both the rabbis and Indy for the outstanding Hebrew classes in schools, adult community schools, children community schools, the friendship circle for disabled and special needs children, the beautiful camp they have for summer programs. The Shabbat Jewish Center is just a center that welcomes all people and provides so many opportunities for education and growth, and not only Parker, but the South Metro Denver area, and we are so honored and privileged to have you both here tonight. Thank you for coming and accepting this award.
Yep, and it says, "A certificate of recognition is awarded to the Shabbat Jewish Center for the outstanding contributions made to the residents of Parker and surrounding communities," and I send it today, February 22nd. Good luck with that, so. Well, so we're going to get the council to stand up here. Absolutely. Chris, can I take those for you? The two person left, excuse me, I think now it's going to be camera ready.
We get to stand together all the time.
Back to you, here. We'll let you guys be in the center.
Are we moving down?
Yeah, we're moving. The lights are there, we're good.
It's always logistics with this room, Phil. All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Andy.
Mayor.
Just going to have to stand up again.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Andy.
Mayor.
Just going to have to stand up again.
All right, Mr. Buddeck, and we'll have Michael and Diane join. And Chief, would you come down and join me for this, too? Laura, come on down. Always worried when you're coming to these meetings, do I? We're good, crap. Are you waiting for me outside, or? Easy catch. Well, this is but a smidgen of the Parker Task Force. How many volunteers do you have? 100 active volunteers. It's an amazing number.
Ask him how many employees he has.
How many paid employees?
Exactly.
How many paid employees do you have?
Well, we just celebrated our 35 years anniversary last week, and for 35 years we've had zero paid employees. 35 years ago, no one's ever skipped on either.
Wow. You started...
We do get stale cookies now.
There's a difference, Stan, between expired and stale, so, especially in our family. But actually, you know, one of the things about the Parker Task Force that people may or may not realize, you know, you are an amazing source in the safety net of Parker. You have food, you give people grace, you give them self-esteem and confidence as they shop through the grocery store, you help them with their budgets, you help them with all that stuff that really, you know, gets them when they're at their moment. You know, your backpack program is just second to none. I'm always amazed at how many backpacks are in your shop when I come over there and see. It's just amazing. But I think what people don't know is you are the partner and the safety net for the Parker Police Department as well, and a valued partner. So Chief, I wonder if you could say a few words of just what the Parker Task Force, I know it put me on the spot there.
No, no. We never, I've lost words, so. No, I try not. But it's been a great partnership for us and the Task Force. I mean, whenever we come across a family in need, you know, the Parker Task Force and Steve and his staff, they're always there and willing to help and support us, you know, with the vouchers, if we have some people that need a hotel room, you know, all we have to do is reach out, and it's been a great, great partnership over the years. So thank you for everything, and all the support. We appreciate it.
Councilmember Hefta, would you like to say a few words as the dominator?
Well, I wrote the award, and I just, I had the opportunity to visit Steve and his staff this past year, and was just astounded by the grace and the dedication and the volunteers and the kindness of your family staff. And I immediately went home and wrote the award.
So let me share what she wrote. "This is to commend Steve Buddeck, the staff, and volunteers of the Parker Task Force for their outstanding contributions to the residents of Parker and surrounding communities. Your charitable contribution to those in need and service to thousands of people on an annual basis is outstanding. Your program is recognized for its efficient operation and exceptional contributions to the community with great distinction. These actions reflect great credit upon Steve, the staff, the volunteers, and the Parker Task Force, and I know you would never take credit for the award, so." But would you like, would any of you like to say a few words?
Well, I would say a couple of words, because we do have an amazing staff of volunteers, and that's really the heart and soul of the operation, but I also want to say that we have a really dynamic leader. Steve Buddeck, he walks the walk, he talks the talk, and he sets the example for all of us, so thank you for all of you.
I want to echo Diane's thoughts. I've worked with you for 12 years, and it's been great, it's been an honor. I appreciate it, and it's... Sounds hard to hear the number of years, isn't it? It is.
Yeah, I feel like I'm blessed every single day to give the opportunity, to do an opportunity to serve our community the way that we do, and also to walk alongside these amazing volunteers. Our average volunteer has been with us for over eight years. You don't see that. You don't see that. These individuals have just dynamic skill sets. You know, Diane being the lobbyist, she handles all our public relations.
She does a lot.
I love that word. No, too retired, but no, just, you know, you have these amazing people come into our operation, and they have so much to give. And all of us, pretty much all retired, but we realize that at our age, we serve a purpose in life. This is our purpose, to get everyone to come here, to do our best to serve our community. And it's an honor for all of us.
Well, in certificate of recognition, it's awarded to you, the staff, and the volunteers of the Parker Task Force for outstanding contributions made to the residents of Parker and the surrounding communities. Thank you. All right, let's get the picture. You guys screwed in.
Chief, please.
Did you want to stand up for it?
No.
We're totally blocked.
Excuse us.
You guys ready? Thank you guys so much. Thank you. And what's the next?
On March 5th.
All right, March 5th.
See you all you guys soon.
Could you come over here?
Uh, yeah, I could.
See you, Rabbi. Thank you.
Keep smiling, hit me in the...
All right, and we are not done with our special presentations yet. We are honored to have Senator Jim Smallwood with us tonight. Senator, do you have a presentation planned, or if not, I have a little job for you.
Can I use this mic?
You might want to lift it up a little bit. But I purposely set back the pledge of allegiance, and Senator, I wonder if you'd lead us to the pledge of allegiance tonight?
Of course, great. Ms., if you could please join me in the pledge of allegiance? "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Well, thanks for having me.
No little tidbits on what's going on down in Denver?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, thanks for having me. I did plan to just spend a couple minutes with you, give you a sort of state of the city from a legislative perspective. Now, I know most of you, and I've spent time with most of you, so this isn't going to be a newsflash for many of you, but I know there are thousands or tens of thousands probably listening online who would appreciate, I appreciate the update as well, so we'll do that primarily for the benefits of the citizens.
And we appreciate your optimism at that number, too, so.
But again, my name is Jim Smallwood, so I'm a state senator representing District 4. So today, before redistricting, the state of Colorado has two state senate seats, District 4, which is Parker, Franktown, Castle Rock, Castle Pines, Larkspur, and all parts south, and then District 30, which is the part of the county that we don't talk as much about, but that's Highlands Ranch, Lone Tree, Roxborough area. So I have been the elected senator now, I'm in my sixth year, so the second year of my second and final term, because we have term limits in the state of Colorado. I'm currently serving as the chair of the Legislative Audit Committee, I am the chair of the Republican Senate Caucus, and I am the ranking member of the Health and Human Services Committee, and really, really proud and grateful to be, have the ability to serve the citizens of Parker in particular. So thank you for giving me a few minutes to kind of give you an update, so. It's an interesting year again in the senate. You probably remember our conversation last year, and the lay of the land hasn't changed that much in that for elected Republicans like myself, it's a little bit dreary. For the Democrats listening, it's time to cheer and relish as the Democrats hold a majority in both the state senate with a 20 to 15 margin, the state House of Representatives with a 41 to 24 margin, and obviously, our governor Jared Polis is a Democrat. So we are definitely in the minority as elected Republicans, so it's playing a lot more defense than offense, but this is an election year, so they tend to be a little bit quieter as far as contentious bills and things that I would say the fringes of the parties tend to sort of calm down a little bit during election years, right? Nobody likes to make headlines. So one important thing that's happening is redistricting. So if we think back to the last time we had a census in our state and there was redistricting, Republicans, we were ones that were really stamping our feet and shaking our fists because we had, we had won the state, we felt, in number of electeds. We had 110,000 more votes than our opponents, yet we were still in the minority, and we felt that there was just, a large part of that was due to the gerrymandering that you hear about in pretty much every state. So this was a unique year because we finally, for the first time, had an independent redistricting commission redraw all the lines. So, good and bad news for me, my district, District 4, shrunk considerably geographically speaking. So went from basically the entire rural part of Douglas County, including Parker and Castle Rock, now to just Parker, Castle Rock, and Stone Gate, pretty much. So this district will no longer represent areas outside of that. So what'll be interesting for all of you is that next year, there will be other people probably coming to present to you, other people that will be representing places like slightly outside of Parker, slightly outside of Castle Rock, like Perry Park and Franktown. So we'll go from two senate districts to potentially four, because the district that is, you probably know, the inspiration area is City of Aurora, and so whichever senator ends up winning that election will actually represent part of Douglas County, which will be, which will be really interesting. So our legislative session is 120 days long via the Constitution, so we started in the middle of January, and we'll all turn back into pumpkins on May 12th, and so I am here to answer any questions that you have regarding maybe pending legislation, legislation that might still be forthcoming, hot topic items. I know a lot of you were very involved in Parker's attempt to have the state of Colorado maybe view our relationship with RTD a little differently, and that was a valiant, yet failed effort, so we'll chalk that one up to experience and plan to run a bill similar to that again next year. But again, thanks for having me, and I'm here to answer any questions that you have.
Great, thank you. We'll start to my left, Councilman Dyak.
Thank you, Mayor. Senator Smallwood, transportation, there's discussion at the regional level about a bill regarding bikes going through stop signs. Are you familiar with that? I'm obviously giving you incredible detail here. If not, just holistically, from a transportation standpoint, how much money is the legislature thinking about rolling out to, to be spent by CDOT on true roads and bridge type of projects or initiatives?
Thank you, Mayor Protem, for the question. So we haven't seen the long bill yet, so for those listening, there is basically one week of our 120-day session that's dedicated exclusively in each chamber for what we call the long bill, which is the state budget. And Colorado is also a little bit unique in that we, as party members, elect our members of the Joint Budget Committee, who basically go in and we rely on those people, we voted for them and elected them, to manage that budget process for us. So we're all actively involved, we can do amendments, we can vote yes, we can vote no, but we put that in the capable hands usually of our Joint Budget Committee member, so I have not seen the final numbers on the budgets, but the short answer and the honest answer is not nearly enough to roads and bridges, is the answer, because it's the answer every year from my perspective. A lot too much towards transit, too much towards transit that doesn't benefit, I think, the citizens of Douglas County, for sure, and we try to change that a little bit every year. So the particular bill that you're referring to, if it's the one I'm thinking of, if it involves bicycles, is basically allowing bicycles to skirt some of the rules of the road in the name of saving cyclist lives, right? That cyclists should be able to take some particular evasive steps that maybe motor vehicles shouldn't take, like stopping at stop signs and stoplights, for example.
It was a, it was a robust conversation at the regional level at Dr. Cog, and you know, obviously, you know, I think you have passionate people who embrace the bike. I just, I was just trying to figure out, because we were kind of going back and forth with it, it seemed kind of illogical that you're giving latitude to let bikes go through stop signs when cars can't, and again, I was just kind of curious as to where that was at, because at the Dr. Cog level, we were just, people wanted to support it, other people wanted to monitor it, so just didn't know where that was in the process, and if you had any additional information on that, because I'm sure we're going to talk about it again next month, and the month after that, I'm sure.
Not seen it in the senate yet, and I've definitely not voted on it, and I'm certainly not a sponsor of it.
Yeah, thank you, and again, my apologies to everybody, I have to leave. I wanted to be here for you. Thank you again for all you do for us, and take care.
Thanks, John. Councilmember Barryton.
No questions, but thank you for everything you do for us, thanks.
My pleasure.
Councilmember Hefta?
Yes, Senator Smallwood, can you give us any updates on oil and gas reform legislation that might be coming through?
So I have not seen anything yet this year. Obviously, in the last several years, been, there's been enormous changes, most of it not good, from my perspective, in that I think it's been crippling for the communities that really rely on oil and gas revenue for their, for their communities. So I've, I've seen very little good in the last few years. I mean, I think the positive side of it, there has been a renewed focus on safety, right? When you consider the tragedies in Firestone and other areas across the state, I think there's been good work done to help mitigate those, but in some cases, those have gone a bit too far, I think, when it comes to looking at setbacks and the entire rewriting of the purpose of Colorado's Oil and Gas Commission. So from my perspective, I think most of what was going to be done, at least the big pieces of legislation, have been done. I haven't seen anything yet this year.
Thank you for the question.
Councilman Hendricks.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for coming, Senator. Any other hot topic items you want to address, or tell us that you feel important?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember, for the question. So I think it's not only myself, it's the entire caucus, and I'm the chair of the Senate Republican Caucus, and I believe this year, we, along with the House Republicans, and quite honestly, a lot of our Democrat colleagues, are really, I think, finally somewhat unified in wanting to address safety in our neighborhoods, number one. Colorado, I just read, is in the unenviable position of now being the leader in the country in auto thefts, for example. We managed to overtake Washington DC, which is hardly an award that we should all be really cheering for. So when, when you imagine a state like Colorado, leading in a category like that, it's highly concerning, and whether it's violent crime rates, property crime rates, people are, for the first time since I've lived here, and I moved here in 1993, first time feeling really unsafe in a lot of their communities across the state. So crime prevention, safety in our neighborhoods would be number one, affordability is probably number two. I would like to see our friends on the other side of the aisle take some real, really, I would say, more aggressive steps to undo some of the things that they've done to make renting so expensive, for example, in our state. And when I was campaigning in 2016, a lot of you heard me say, even places like Douglas County are struggling with affordability, right? I'm not sure that my kids are going to be able to buy homes like I did years ago, so affordability, whether it's all the new taxes and fees that have been levied across the state, things that have made it very expensive to build homes, and for landlords to rent homes, and obviously, our energy prices, to, councilmembers point, what's happening in the energy sector, it's made, made energy really, really expensive. And number three, which I think Douglas County's been a pioneer in, for a lot of years, is in school choice. So parents, particularly through the pandemic, we've heard are really fed up with the results of the assessment scores across our state, where our kids simply aren't learning to the level that a lot of parents would like to see, and they want a louder voice in that. So we're going to do everything we can to make sure that parents have as much choice as they possibly can, as much say as they possibly can in their kids' education. And I think, again, that's, those are three messages that you'll see in a lot of bills. We've already seen a lot of those bills, and I think you're going to see them from both sides of the aisle, and that'll be what's different. Thank you.
Councilmember Pope?
Well, Senator Smallwood, first of all, thank you for your support on RTD. I know it's an ongoing process, but thank you. So, you know, one of the things I'm looking at is, all this list of bills, both House and Senate, which may impact local communities, which one or couple do you think will have the most impact on how we operate locally?
Well, it's early in the session, councilmembers, I appreciate the question, but I haven't, I haven't seen too many yet that I've been, I mean, I probably only cast votes on 10 bills out of the 500 that we'll see in the year. It tends to be kind of a flurry at the, at the end. So mercifully, I haven't seen many that I'm really, really upset about, other than the chief and I were talking in the lobby about another bill that changes interrogation techniques across juveniles, which I'm very concerned about. In a, in a state with rising crime, I think the last thing that we want to do is start changing the rules around interrogation of suspects. So that's the one I'm most concerned about right now, because it's the newest and it's the freshest on my mind. But if, if those types of bills continue to appear, those will be a concern, and I would say particularly based on the events of the last couple of weeks, I think we need to really elevate the redefinition of the fentanyl possession like tomorrow. So if there's anything that I, if I had a magic wand and could change anything, it would be to reverse that law right away, and I think that'll happen still this session.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Councilmember Riera?
Thank you, Senator, I appreciate you being here. Just, I think you've addressed the biggest ones of the law enforcement and tying their hands, and I appreciate you guys trying to step back some of those policies that obviously have shown that they're trouble to our communities. My biggest one, and I think a lot of the affordability issue... to our communities. My biggest one, and I think a lot of the affordability issues are a byproduct of said construction defects issues. And we are stuck now with the repercussions of a bad bill many, many years ago, and thankfully, we got walked back a little bit. Is there noise of reintroducing some of those issues, or are we safe for now?
Yeah, thank you, councilmember. I wish there was something that could change those more. I mean, I would love more than anything else to see more new multifamily, for-sale properties being built, particularly in our neighborhood, here in Douglas County. And we just, we just don't see many of them like they do in Denver, where they can command such an enormous price that it makes up for the cost of that inflated liability insurance. It's exactly, in our opinions, I suppose, based on how you phrased it, the direct result of bad legislation, a bad legislative environment. So even if the Republicans were to take back, let's say, the state senate, which many think will happen, and I think will happen, until we get back to one-party control of the House, Senate, and governor's office, I see no opportunity whatsoever, and I'm just being honest, I see no opportunity for any of those things to change. So that won't happen this election cycle.
Appreciate you stating that. Thank you.
Senator, always a pleasure. Thank you. And as Councilmember Pogue said, thank you so much for our sponsorship of 46. We learned a lot. I don't feel like we got the bus law committee, the kill committee, but we got pretty close to that. So, but we lasted in there a couple of rounds. It was good.
You all did great. You're great advocates. So thanks for, thanks for being there in person. I think that makes a big difference also when you're there as testifiers. So thank you for taking time out of your day to drive an hour up to Denver, to park and sit and wait and have your voices heard. It means a lot to me. So thank you.
Excellent. Thanks. And thanks for everything you do for Parker. We appreciate it.
Thanks. Take care.
All right, moving on to the next topic. Item number five is for public comment. Public comment happens, sorry, in one of three ways here. You can either make a public comment by signing up in the back of the room and coming down to the podium. You can do it online or by an email to the town clerk's office before 5:00 today. We've not received any by email. Is there anybody in the room wishing to make a public comment? Seeing none. Chris, do we have anybody online?
There's no online.
And there's no online. Okay, we'll move on to item number four, reports, items, and comments from mayor and council. I will start to my right, Councilman Rivero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Week three of the month is a busy one. Couple highlights. I have the honor of chairing Cherry Creek Water Basin Quality Authority, and we are going through a unique process. We've always been managed by a managing service, hiring, an example, a professional management company, i.e., you know, Clifton, Larson, Allen, et cetera, to manage our district, our authority, excuse me. We decided a couple of years ago to go out and actually have our first employee, and we hired somebody. And then that person moved on, and we've now reassessed. And we are going through the process of hiring a technical manager and an administrative manager to share the burden. And I think we're going to create an even better and more efficient and excellent organization. So that has taken a lot of my time, and it's gone well. I think next month, we'll have conclusion, and we're really looking forward to bringing somebody on with that. Lots of other things, but another highlight was I had the odd, some of us went to a fashion show that was outstanding, from what I understand, and a couple of others went to a charity event for Douglas County Community Foundation. It was casino night at the Pace Center. Fabulous event. I definitely enjoyed myself. Had a great coach that taught me how to play craps, something I've always wanted to learn. And she may or may not be in the room right now, so I had to throw that in there. But incredibly.
She's hiding behind the public comments.
It was a blast. It was, you know, free money, and we got to learn, and didn't matter what you bet. And I had a blast. So a great night. Kudos to former Mayor Mike Wade and the job he's done with the foundation. Just a great event. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. Councilmember Pogue.
Ah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have been working in, along with Councilmember Barrington, to try to bring our Greater Parker Foundation back to life. We have some work that we're going to be looking at, but we have a long ways to go with that. Additionally, I've been attending a few meetings with the Colorado Municipal League, looking at pending legislation. I do have some grave concerns about some things that are being put forth, and the potential impact with local communities. And the other thing I learned from that is Denver does not plow their snow anywhere near as well as our staff in Parker. So thank you, staff in Parker, because that's all I could think of was, hey, our guys do a good job. Why don't, I don't have to walk through berms right at the crossings and through a six-foot inch of water, because you dammed it in. It was crazy. So thank you.
And Mr. Smith, I'm sure you'll take that back to your team tomorrow, and it'll be a red-letter day for them.
Awesome. Councilmember Hendricks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing to report.
Okay. Councilmember Barrington.
With the Douglas County Housing Partnership, we have just hired a new executive director. And so we're, I'm excited to finally get to meet her. And other than that, it's been a little quiet.
Councilmember Hefta.
Yes, I did attend the Douglas County Executive Committee for Homeless. And we did go over with all the members on the committee from out, throughout Douglas County, the statistics that regarding the homeless population. We did have an education on what the homeless population looks like. And next month, we will have a presentation from the Springs Rescue Mission from General Retired Jack Briggs. Also, I just, I celebrated Valentine's Day going to the library with my children here in wonderful Parker, Colorado, and I missed some of those events, which Councilmember Rivero talks about. So sad that I missed them, but I did enjoy it, our local community.
Excellent. I just have a couple to report. Councilmember Hendricks and I attended the grand opening of the Nest Boutique on Main Street. It is beautiful, if you haven't been in there. It's one of the old historic buildings, the houses down there, and a lot of neat stuff in there. And on, I think it was the 12th, attended with my family, the Love 'Em or Leave 'Em 5K. Mary Colton, I don't know how you got 350 people out there in 13-degree weather, but it was a blast. It was you and your team did, and certainly the communications team was out there. It was fantastic. So thank you. It was one of those, we're roaring back. We're back to in-person running around. So I don't want to tell anybody my time, but I think a 19-minute mile is good, right? That's not bad. Okay. All right. You always ask a staff member that question, never, you know. Don't ask your wife that. All right. Council, we're going to move on to the consent agenda items. Consent agenda items are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of consent agenda items unless council votes to remove them. Before you, you see items 5A and 5B, and I'll entertain a motion on those.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve items 5A and 5B, please. Second.
Motion is made by Councilman Rivero, seconded by Councilmember Hendricks. This will be a roll call. Rivero.
Aye.
Pogue.
Aye.
Hendricks.
Yes.
Barrington.
Yes.
Hefta.
Yes.
And that passes 5 to 0. Item number six, on public hearings for the Chamber's High Point in Com Park, there's been a request to move that out, oh, I thought someone's coming down. There's been a request to move that out to a date certain of March 7. So I'll entertain a motion.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Can I get three motions on that, one for each of the items?
Absolutely. So you want one on one?
One on the minor development.
One A, one B, and on the amendment?
Yes, correct, on one, two, and three.
Mr. Mayor, I move to move.
To continue.
To, thank you. Move to continue the Chamber's High Point filing, number one, minor development plat, to a date certain of?
March 7, 2022.
March 7, 2022. I'll second.
Motion is made by Councilman Rivero, seconded by Councilmember Hendricks. This will be a roll call. Rivero.
Aye.
Pogue.
Aye.
Hendricks.
Yes.
Barrington.
Yes.
Hefta.
Yes.
And that passes 5 to 0. Item number B is a, the subdivision agreement.
Mr. Mayor, I move to continue the Chamber's High Point filing, number one, subdivision improvement agreement, to a date certain of March 7, 2022.
I'll second that.
Motion is made by Councilman Rivero, seconded by Councilmember Pogue. Rivero.
Aye.
Pogue.
Aye.
Hendricks.
Yes.
Barrington.
Yes.
Hefta.
Yes.
And that passes 5 to 0. And last.
Mr. Mayor, I move to continue the First Amendment to the Com Park Village South filing, number one, subdivision agreement, subdivision improvement agreement, excuse me, to a date certain of March 7, 2022. I'll second.
And that motion is made by Councilman Rivero, seconded by Councilmember Hendricks. Rivero.
Aye.
Pogue.
Aye.
Hendricks.
Yes.
Barrington.
Yes.
Hefta.
Yes.
And that passes 5 to 0. On to item number seven, ordinances. Council, we have five ordinances tonight. The first is ordinance number 4.8.6 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance to amend sections 11.13.020 and 11.13.030 of the Parker Municipal Code concerning contracting procedures for public works projects. Mr. Hudson, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Next slide, please. So tonight, I'll be talking to you about some potential revisions to Chapter 1113 of the Parker Municipal Code. Chapter 1113 is titled Contracting Procedures for Capital Improvement Projects. The term capital improvement project means building, altering, improving, or demolishing of any public structure or building or other public improvements of any kind to any, to any public real property. This code gets into very specific details, but not limited to written contract requirements, contract approval thresholds, several other things. For example, contracts over $100,000 have to be approved by town council. We're going to talk about that a little bit later, because it affects one of the potential changes. This ordinance, 4.86, was approved back in 2005, and this code reflects what town council approved in 2005. In 2021, staffers reviewing the section of the code and noticing potential changes and additions that would need to be approved at town councils to improve this chapter. And this presentation is to review those potential changes. Next slide, please. There's two sections of the code, 1113.020 called general requirements, and 11.13.030 called bidding required, that there's some potential changes. Next slide, please. So the first one, general requirements, we're looking to add some language to this. And right below, currently, the code reads, and we're going to add the word "or designate" to it. Basically, a contract for capital improvement projects shall be submitted to the town attorney and approved as a legal form, and the public works director, or designate is the new language we're talking about, as the content before it's executed. So the reason this is being proposed is basically, if the public works director is not available, we would like to continue to approve contracts on timely matter. Let's say a public works director is on a week vacation, that contract would have to sit on his desk until he returned. So in this case, the public works director would designate someone to basically approve the content of the contract. And you may ask yourself, why is that important? There's lots of law requirements with contracts, whether they be performance bonds, insurance requirements, so we need to make sure the contract's proper. So that's what we're asking for, to basically add or designate to that section. Next slide, please. Next slide has to do with bidding required. And what we're proposing to change here is one word from less to more. Previously, I talked about contracts over $100,000 have to go to the town council. Section 1113.030, there's three sentences that make up this section of the code. And currently, I can read it to you if you'd like, but right now, it says that town council may, I'm emphasizing the word "may," waive the requirements of bidding a project if it's less than $100,000. Well, town council doesn't approve contracts of less than $100,000, only if it's more than $100,000. So the first sentence has the language "may." So again, if an emergency occurs, and this all has to do with emergency contracting that happens, if an emergency does occur, town council may, doesn't say you have to, town council would be potentially convened, the situation would be talked about, and town council may give staff the authority to move forward in an emergency context. I think the next two sentences, when you read the whole section as a whole, provides some checks and balances to that ability. Basically, that the town administrator may direct the appropriate department to procure the emergency proposal, but ultimately, the town administrator has to come back and provide a full report to town council on those details. I've been with the town for over 20 years, and the only time that I know of, we've gotten into a true emergency, maybe a couple of times. But one for sure, there was a sinkhole that opened up on Main Street over by Dransfeld. This happened in the mid to late 90s, before my time that was here. I would hope the town council would see a sinkhole on Main Street as being an emergency. And today, $100,000 doesn't go very far. But again, to expedite and get that repaired as soon as possible. We've also had some snow-related emergencies as well, expediting to get contracts out to help do extreme snow events here in the town. So to wrap that up, basically, summary of the proposed revisions are two sections of the Chapter 1113. The intent of the proposed changes is to improve the chapter. It's been since 2005. We have more staff in public works than we did in 2005. And an amending ordinance is required to make these changes. With that, I'll answer any questions you might have about these changes.
Great. Thanks, Chris. So we'll follow this the way we do all ordinances. We'll have a time for staff questions on it. I'll open it up for any public comments. We'll bring it back for comments and debate, and then finally, a vote. So I'll start to my right, Councilmember Hendricks. Any questions?
No questions.
Councilmember Pogue?
No, since this is generally only relating to emergency situations, I have no questions.
Okay. Councilman Rivero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So designate, talk about the organization, if you will, under public works and engineering. We've got the public works director, but we also have deputies, correct?
Correct. We have two deputies under the public works director, myself and Jim Gilbert.
Perfect. Thank you. And then the second item is essentially fixing a contradiction, for lack of a better word.
I think it was just a, personally, I think it was just an archetype. When you read it in context, I think the intent always was, you know, if there is a true emergency costing more than $100,000, that's when town council would have the ability to waive it. Again, you don't have to. And that language is unchanged with the word "may."
The ultimate power still resides with?
You got, ultimate power still resides with council. And if you say, hey, it's not an emergency to have a sinkhole on Main Street, guess what? We don't have to deal with a sinkhole on Main Street. We can bid it out and take our, it just takes the time to go through the process.
Thank you, deputy.
Councilmember Barrington.
No questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Hefta?
No questions. Thank you.
Okay, with that, I will open this up for public comment at 7:49. Anyone in the room wishing to make a comment on this ordinance? Chris, do we have anyone on the line?
If there's anyone on Zoom who wishes to make a public comment, please raise your hand. There is not.
Okay, I'll close public comment at 7:50 and bring it back to the council in that same order. Councilmember Hendricks, any comments?
No, no comments.
Councilmember Pogue?
No, I don't.
Councilmember Rivero?
No.
Councilmember Barrington?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Hefta?
Thank you for catching these changes that need to be updated from Public Works.
Great. With that, I'll entertain a motion on ordinance number 4.8.86.1.
I'll move to approve ordinance number 4.86.1 on second reading.
I'll second.
That was Laura. Okay. Motion was made by Councilmember Pogue, seconded by Councilmember Hefta. Rivero.
Aye.
Pogue.
Aye.
Hendricks.
Yes.
Barrington.
Yes.
Hefta.
Yes.
And that passes 5 to 0. Next up, ordinance number 3.01.90.1 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance to amend Title 13 of the Parker Municipal Code relating to family childcare homes. Mr. Matthews, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. As noted before you tonight, is a proposal to amend Section 13 of the Municipal Code regarding family childcare homes. Sorry, I'm just waiting for the presentation. So I'll just go ahead and begin, since there aren't any true graphics in there that are needed. So back in 2021, a long, long time ago, Colorado State Legislature amended the state statutes regarding family childcare homes to class to classify them as a use by right in any residence for purposes of local regulations, including zoning. The legislative purpose on that statute was aligning local governing authority regulations to expand opportunities to access childcare in family childcare homes. The town code currently allows family childcare homes as home occupations with up to six unrelated children. The proposed amendment to the code in response to the statute is to define family childcare homes as being located in a home and providing less than 24-hour care for up to six unrelated children. Family childcare homes would be allowed in all residential zone districts, and this would also apply to any PDs that allow for residential uses. The proposal also defines large family childcare homes as being located in a home and providing less than 24-hour care for seven to 12 unrelated children. Large family childcare homes would require a conditional use approval if located next to an existing large family childcare home. So not the first one, but the second one would require the conditional use approval. Those conditional uses can only consider traffic and parking per the state statute. Next slide, please. January 27th, Planning Commission heard the proposed amendments to the ordinance. Staff and the Planning Commission recommend town council approve an ordinance regarding amending the land development ordinance regarding family childcare homes, large family childcare homes, to align with the recently approved state statutes. As always, I'm available for any questions you may have.
Great, thanks, Bryce. We'll go to staff questions on this. I'll start to my left, Councilmember Barrington.
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Councilmember Hefta?
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Rivera?
Thank you. Talk to me a little bit, a family, a childcare home is a business. Does it occupy a business license in the state, in the town of Parker?
So the town today does require a business license for childcare homes. There are 17 in the town today.
And they must remain in good standing with the town. Are they also regulated by the Health Department, Troy County at this point, and Douglas County in the future?
So they are related by, I'm sorry, they are regulated by the state.
By the state?
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Pogue?
Yeah, I want to continue that question on regulation. With the one to six unrelated children, there's one child or one caretaker, right?
So I'm not familiar with the details of the state statute because we don't enforce that. But they would have to comply with the state requirements in terms of the number of caretakers before they got their license through the state.
Yeah, because I would assume seven to 12 would require more than one person.
It would seem like a lot of work.
I just wondered what that was. Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilmember Hendricks?
No questions.
Okay, with that, we will open it up for public comment. Anyone in the room wishing to make a public comment on ordinance three dot zero one dot nine oh dot one? They just get longer and longer. Chris, do we have anybody online wishing to make a comment?
If there's anyone on Zoom that wishes to make a comment, please raise your hand. There is not.
All right, we'll come back for council comments and debate. Councilmember Barrington?
No comments, thank you.
Councilmember Hefta?
Thank you for your presentation, and this guidance, this will align itself with the state statute, and that's what's necessary in this particular case. Thank you.
Great, Councilwoman Rivera?
Yeah, I echo Councilwoman Hefta's comments. We must be in compliance with the state statute, and this will allow us to reach that point.
Councilmember Pogue?
Yeah, thank you. I do appreciate the fact that you're trying to limit two neighboring large childcare homes from occupying or providing that service when they're right next door to each other. Thank you.
Councilmember Hefta? Hendricks, I'm sorry. I haven't read it here. Hendricks?
Uh, no, no questions, thank you.
Awesome, with that, I will entertain a motion, ordinance number three dot zero one dot nine zero dot one.
I move to approve ordinance three dot zero one dot nine zero dot one on second reading.
I'll second.
Second. Motion was made by Councilmember Hefta, seconded by Councilmember Barrington. Rivera?
Aye.
Pogue?
Aye.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that ordinance passes five to zero. Ordinance number nine dot three four four on second reading. We have the first of a doubleheader here with Mary Colton. Trying to get as many recreation things as I can in here, so. A bill for an ordinance to approve the grant agreement for therapeutic recreation scholarships by and between the town of Parker and the Board of County Commissioners of the county of Douglas.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
I'm Mary Colton, Parks and Recreation Director. I might not.
I'll take that.
Hello, can you hear me?
There you are.
Okay. So this evening, I'd like to provide you with some background and request approval of both grant agreements for therapeutic recreation scholarships in addition to adaptive water safety and swimming scholarships. Just to begin with some background, the Developmental Disabilities Mill Levy, or DDML, grant program is funded through one mill property tax that was established back in 2001 and dedicated specifically for individuals with intellectual or developmental disabilities. Ninety-five percent of the Mill Levy funds support Developmental Pathways, which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization that helps connect people to local resources. And 5% go to the competitive grant programs. The DDML Advisory Council reviews these grant applications and presents recommendations for funding to the Board of County Commissioners. Next slide, please. The 2021 DDML grant awards provide funding for the 2022 year, and in 2021, 40 entities in Douglas County received awards totaling $405,306. The town of Parker submitted two grant applications. The first for therapeutic recreation scholarships. This serves around 250 people per year and provides improved access to free or discounted recreation facilities, programs, and inclusive experiences for individuals, families, or groups with developmental disabilities. We requested $18,000 and were awarded $14,400 for that particular request. The second request was for adaptive safety and swimming scholarships. This provides one-to-one instruction to around 100 people per year on water safety, learn-to-swim skills, and independence in the water while utilizing an individual treatment plan, including fitness, cognitive, and social goals. This year, we requested $14,000 and were awarded $11,200. So total of $25,600. Next slide, please. So Parks and Recreation staff recommending the approval of the following ordinances, ordinance dot, ordinance number nine dot three four four, a grant agreement for therapeutic recreation scholarships by and between the town of Parker and the Board of County Commissioners of the county of Douglas. And second ordinance, number nine dot three four five, a grant agreement for adaptive water safety and swimming scholarships by and between the town of Parker and the Board of County Commissioners of the county of Douglas. That concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Awesome. Kristin, is it okay if we ask questions on both and then have separate motions?
Yeah, but you'll need to open the public hearing for the second ordinance. So let's go ahead and just take public comment on this one and then do a motion, and then we'll open up the second one.
Okay, and then go on to the next one. Okay, thank you. Council, questions of Mary on ordinance nine dot three four five? I'm going to start to my far left, and Councilmember Hefta?
Yeah. Mary, you mentioned that 250 people per year were served. Does that number fluctuate from time to time? Does that go up? It does. It does fluctuate year to year. It is only, the trajectory has been upwards. It's never gone down. By restrictions during COVID, the number was reduced. But, you know, before and after that, it's been steadily increasing. More and more people are taking advantage of those scholarships, and we look at that as a barrier reducing opportunity for accessibility. I think the word's out now, so people are familiar with our program and its success. And, you know, our Denny Jacobs, who is no longer with us, but will be filling her position here shortly as of March 7th, will have a new therapeutic recreation coordinator. But she did a fantastic job of growing the program. We've been successful with these grant opportunities over the years, so hopefully we'll continue to do that.
Thank you.
Excellent. Councilmember Barrington?
Yeah, thank you. So how, so 250 families were served. How is it promoted to the families? How do they learn about this program? Is it just through the website or?
Yeah, so there are several mechanisms for increasing awareness just through our website first and foremost. But the county also has resources page where we're listed as one of those grantees that get, you know, that are affording individuals in the community those opportunities for therapeutic recreation. So they have those resources that help get the word out about what we're offering, social media, website, our Parks and Recreation brochure. Denny does a great job. There's a network in Douglas County that meets, so we share resources and information that we're very much a part of. So that's primarily how we get the word out about the program.
Thank you.
There are also various groups that take advantage of this, that they're kind of day camp type of groups for adults with disabilities. And so they're people and groups we partner with, so year to year. So they're aware of the program as well.
Councilman Hendricks?
No questions.
Councilmember Pogue?
Oh, I have a major question here. Do you have any relationship with Developmental Pathways?
Developmental Pathways does bring some of their groups and their participants to participate in our program, in our scholarship program. So they have access as well because they're, you know, their resources only go so far. And if they can leverage resources with the town, you know, we often will do that and work with them and other groups to help. Again, it's all about minimizing the barriers, and anybody who is seeking some of these types of services, whether it's those swim safety or just access to our facilities and programs, recreation programs specifically, like the dances.
Okay, I need to verify that I do not have a conflict of interest on this issue because of Developmental Pathways. My daughter is a director there, so I don't know if that creates a potential conflict or not.
Kristin, thoughts?
To clarify, your daughter has a, is on the board for Developmental Pathways and Developmental Pathways.
She is an actual director of that facility.
I don't think that.
Not on a board, she's employed.
I think that that is too attenuated to.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, all right.
And I suppose if you can just affirm on the record that you can approve this grant agreement without any bias.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
So then my real question is, do you have, are these kids restricted based on where they lived? Are they in the Parker area, or how does that work?
So Douglas County is the criteria. It began with Parker residents only, but the county really wanted, and the advisory committee really wanted to see that expanded throughout the county so that everybody in the county had these resources available to them. So we serve.
Are there other providers in Douglas County that do this?
Yes, there sure are.
Thank you.
Sure.
Councilwoman Rivera?
No questions, Mr. Mayor.
All right, with that, we are going to open this up for public comment at 8:05. Anyone in the room wishing to make a public comment on nine dot three four four? Or anybody on Zoom?
If there's anyone in Zoom who wishes to comment, please raise your hand. There is not.
Okay, then we'll go ahead and bring it back to the council for any further comments and updates. Councilmember Hefta?
No, I just would like to state that I'm very supportive of supporting people with developmental disabilities, and this is a wonderful program that our Parks and Recreation participates in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Barrington?
Yeah, I thank you for, I think programs like this are so important, and I'm just so happy that we have something like this to offer.
Councilmember Hendricks?
I agree, it's a great program, and thank you for the presentation.
Councilmember Pogue?
Thank you, I'm in support as well.
Great, Councilwoman Rivera?
Thank you, I also agree. The inclusivity of this program is amazing. It's outstanding. I love the Facebook posts, and I love what Parker shares here with its full community. It's just amazing. Secondly, to help 250 people for $14,000 on this bill and $11,000 on the next bill for a combined total of $25,000 for 250 people, kudos to your staff. Absolutely amazing job. Incredibly well done.
Excellent. With that, I will entertain a motion on nine dot three four four.
I move to approve ordinance number nine dot three four four on second reading.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Councilmember Hendricks, seconded by Councilmember Barrington. Rivera?
Aye.
Pogue?
Aye, with the motion that I do not have a conflict of interest.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Yes.
Councilmember Barrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes five to zero. All right, we're going to do an abbreviated walkthrough on this one. So council ordinance number nine dot three four five on second reading. Any questions of Mary on this one? Okay. Chris, I'm going to open up for public comment at 8:07. Anyone wishing to have a public comment on nine dot three four five? Either I in the room, seeing none, but online?
There is none.
Counsel, any further comments on that?
Nope.
Okay, then I'll entertain a motion on nine dot three four five.
I move to approve ordinance number nine dot three four five on second reading.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Councilmember Hendricks, seconded by Councilmember Barrington. Rivera?
Aye.
Pogue?
Aye, with the same exclusion.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
And Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes five to zero. Because I was busy counting up here, but Mary, I just want to say to you and your staff that run this program, and just the fact that, you know, in Parker, we have all these kiddos, and I know they're older than kiddo age, but, you know, when you're in there watching them do basketball, when they're at their dances, when they're doing their crafts, like Councilwoman Rivera said, it's amazing, and the energy. I'm intimidated to go in. I'd love to play basketball with them, but I don't think they'd pick me, so. But they're just amazing, their energy and their drive. So thank you to you and your staff for facilitating this program. It's very great.
Appreciate that, thank you.
All right, council, item number. Ordinance number nine dot three four three on second reading, a bill for an ordinance to approve the intergovernmental agreement between Douglas County School District RE1 and the town of Parker regarding the sharing of costs of providing police officers to act as school resource officers. And I should make the chief repeat that title, but Chief Sarapis, welcome. And Attorney Wynn, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. We are here before you tonight to ask you to approve ordinance number nine point three four three, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the school district and the town of Parker Police Department for providing school resource officers. As this council well knows, we have had school resource officers in the Douglas County schools in the town of Parker for a number of years. Back in 2019, our most current contract was approved by council for the SROs in a number of the schools, along with a second contract being approved for the school marshal program. The school marshal program provided marshals to travel amongst the different elementary schools and many of the charter schools in the town. Since that time, the Douglas County School District has reached out to us trying to make more consistent contracts between each department that they work with within Douglas County. I have had the opportunity to work very closely with their council in trying to draft a contract that meets their needs, as well as the needs of the town of Parker. So for this year, we are asking you to approve the IGA for the current school year, realizing that we're about halfway through, as well as the next school year. For the current school year, we are merging the two contracts to two prior IGAs for the SRO positions and the SMO positions. We will currently have one school marshal officer that will become an elementary SRO for this year. The Douglas County School District will continue to pay 100% of the salary and benefits for that officer and 50% for the three other officers and the sergeant that are currently in the schools, which is what they are currently paying. Starting next year, the elementary positions will have added a second officer, and the school district will pay 50% for both officers. Other than that, there have been a few minor terms that the contract updated, mostly housekeeping and budgeting. We will now be invoicing the school district on a quarterly basis rather than a monthly basis for the entire amount that we've agreed to. The numbers are on Attachment C. We have Attachment CA, which are the numbers for this school year, and Attachment CB, which are the numbers for the next school year. So we do know the amounts that will be included for those contracts. We've worked closely with our finance department and their finance department to make this as smooth as possible. I'm happy to answer any specific questions.
Council questions on this, Councilwoman Rivera?
No.
Councilmember Pogue?
Yeah, I think just for clarity and transparency, you ought to bring up, you know, what are the costs that the town is actually going to incur?
Absolutely. So the grand total for the SRO program for the Douglas County School District is $687,127 for the current school year. Of that, based on our agreements, the school district will pay $404,000. Of that, based on our agreements, the school district will pay $404,487.50, and the town is responsible for $282,639.50. For next year's school year, the cost will be increased to $872,678.22. Of that, it will be split equally, with both the town and the school district responsible for $436,384.11. Any overtime or extra duty time that the SROs, which would be the high school and the two middle school SROs, perform at the request of the school district, will be paid for by the school district at 100%.
Are the other communities also picking up that 50% the following year?
Yes, we are currently the only jurisdiction that still has 100% at all for our one elementary.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Councilmember Hendricks?
No questions.
Councilmember Barrington?
No questions.
Councilmember Hefta?
No questions.
All right, with that, we will open it up for public comment at 8:13. To anyone in the room on 9.343? Or, Chris, do we have anyone online?
Is there anyone on Zoom that wishes to make a comment? Please raise your hand. There is not.
What happened to Smallwood's thousands of people that watch us every night? I don't know. All right, so.
Tens of thousands.
Do you say tens of thousands? All right, counsel, we'll bring you back for any comments. Josh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, congratulations, kudos. I know this has been a long time of negotiation, and I truly appreciate sticking with it. I appreciate the school district's participation. It's invaluable. I see our job as the Town of Parker, and our government of the Town of Parker is to protect and provide safety to our citizens, and that's the role of our police force, outstandingly they do so. I see those kids in the schools as those citizens that need protection, and even if the district didn't want to come to play, I still believe it's our role to put police officers in those schools. I got the opportunity to ride with Sergeant Holmes one morning, and part of our role is to go around and check on the SROs, and just a great morning to chat with them and go into the schools, and truly appreciate it. I also had the option, Douglas County Youth Initiative does Douglas County Youth Congress, and one of the questions was the need and the role of SROs in the school brought up by the students. They wanted to know what training they went through, and I advocated for and got Sergeant Cleveland Holmes to come and talk to the kids. And we went into the room with some critics, and we left with 16 ambassadors. So just a well-done job by Cleveland, and obviously shows the need. And so just absolutely well-done, great program, and I think Douglas County can be looked up to here as leading the way.
Councilmember Polk?
Yeah, and I appreciate what you're putting forth here. I also want to bring out that the citizens of Douglas County voted to support the cost of some of this through, for Douglas County School District. So I don't want us to think that we're going to give them 100% in the future. They do have the money coming in to offset some of these costs, and I'm glad we can participate. I think it's important, and I think it also helps children who need a little extra support getting it from our officers. So thank you.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Yeah, thank you for the negotiation and all your work on this, and I agree, the SRO program's fantastic.
Councilmember Barrington?
Thanks for everything that you're doing, and it just definitely seems to create more consistency between the district and other law enforcement agencies, so thank you.
And Councilmember Hefta?
Yes, thank you, Chief, and Jamie, for your cooperation in negotiation with Douglas County School District. Sometimes these are difficult to negotiate, and I think our students are well-served by also having an elementary school, school resource officer, school resource officer, and then going to two next year. I do have a question, though, for Chief, if I can, on, can you elaborate just a little bit on the need for the school resource officer at the elementary school level, so everyone can understand that?
Sure. You know, we've entered into a partnership with the Douglas County School District for many, many years, providing SROs, you know, to the school district. You know, when you start having that relationship with the students where an officer can be at their level and be able to build those partnerships and those relationships, so there's not a fear level there, and to educate them on, you know, some of the pitfalls of some of the things that they can get involved in at a very young age, and then you continue that through the school years, it pays dividends in the long run. And you build those relationships, not just with the students, but with the families. One of our SROs from American Academy is Amy Lance, who's in the back of the room, and, you know, she's done a great job as well as an SRO. So you establish a lot of those relationships, you know, throughout the years, and it pays dividends in the long run.
Thank you for that explanation.
Counsel, with that, I will entertain a motion on 9.343.
I move to approve the dedication agreement with, oops, that's the wrong one. I'm past that, go ahead.
I move to approve ordinance number 9.343 on second reading, sir.
I'll second.
Barrington, motion is made by Councilman Rivero, seconded by Councilmember Barrington. Rivero?
Aye.
Polk?
Aye.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes five to zero. So I have a question, though, for you. Anywhere in this, is there any money for training, specifically basketball training? Because the legend Unified versus Police was awful. I mean, fifth year in a row, I get it, fifth year in a row lost, but this loss was bad.
And they're amazing, though, so, you know, it's amazing group of kids.
I know Unified's amazing, I get it, I'm more at the PD.
Yeah, this group needs a lot of help over here, so.
Okay. Mary, Brett, can you maybe work with Jim and, on that? Get our guy some training? I know a team that could train him very well, so. All right, thank you, guys, and thank you for what you do. And to all of our SROs, too. All right, we are entering into a new title called Agreements. Mr. Brett Collins is going to join us to do this. So the first agreement we're going to look at is item 8A, land dedication agreements with Shay Holmes for the tract Q open space on the southeast corner of Main Street and Chambers.
Good evening, council. This thing is, okay, now it's on. Everybody turns it off. Good evening. This item is for a parcel of land known as Track Q that's owned by Shay Holmes. What happened was Shay has a stepping stone development west, south and west of Main Street and Chambers. And as they were developing that, they had a 25, or 20.25 acre parcel of land that came in as a remnant, and that went in when the town actually built Chambers through that area. So what happened was Shay, in talking to them after we built the road, the town built the road, we looked at possibly acquiring that property, and Shay decided that as part of their subdivision agreement, they had an open space there planned in a regional trail connection that actually would make a nice connection between the east-west trail and Cherry Creek Trail. So we started talking to them, and they thought that they'd be better off if they just got rid of the remnant piece of land that's in Douglas County now and go ahead and dedicate that land to the town. There's also a sidewalk involved with this project along the east side of Chambers, and they were required to do that in their subdivision agreement through the Douglas County process, and the value of that was $208,000, and they're willing to pay the town, those funds as compensation for the town building that, along with South Chambers. So with this land dedication, really staff does support taking this land. There's some conservation values that it meets through our open space trails, greenways, and master plan acquisition criteria. The site context is nice, the property is adjacent to connected Regency Metro District open space. We've got Douglas County open space and Town open space parcels all within the area. The environment and ecology, it allows for a wider wildlife habitat corridor west of Newland Gulch. We also preserve some grassland there, the buffer of Newland Gulch, buffers of the Newland Gulch from the Riparian area, from the South Chambers. We also have a scenic aesthetic and sense of place. It's kind of provides a break in development as you're coming into town when entering from the west along Main Street. We've got outdoor recreation and public use that allows for better regional connectivity experience from Cherry Creek Trail to the east-west trail, as I mentioned before. And then the price is right, the land will be acquired at no cost to the town from Shay, and then there's some minor maintenance and management costs that are associated with taking on the land. So, next slide. So for the trail construction that was proposed in there, we did budget some at $475,000 for 2022. And then with the $208,000 that Shay would provide, we have a total revenue of $683,000 that would be available for the trail development. As we got further into the engineering on the trail, we did a conceptual cost estimate and a design. We're looking at closer to about a million dollars to complete the trail construction, which includes an underpass, a drainage crossing, and then the actual concrete trail itself. So we're looking at probably about a $320,000, $320,000 potential shortfall on the current revenue that we have. We look, we'll probably look at fall supplemental budgets to request that additional funds so we can move forward with the project. There is fund balance that we have to cover that shortfall, and we had some cost savings on some of our bigger projects that would cover that. So we're not going to affect anything in our 10-year plan, really is what it comes down to for the project. By building this trail, we just, we got more information on that. And as far as next steps, and we're kind of waiting on the timeline to determine these, we'll do the land acquisition closing with Shay if this is approved tonight, and then we'll do an annexation and rezoning for the property, because we'll want to bring that property into the town, because it's currently in Douglas County. And then rezone it open spaces, what the recommendation is for that property to, so it maintains that character. Then we do the final trail design and construction drawings, do that fall supplemental budget I mentioned, and then bid the project, and then award a construction contract, and then do the construction of the trail. Again, we're working through some connection with the Newland Crossing subdivision, which is directly to the north, that's not built yet, and the trail goes through that property. So there's some timing issues on this, so I'm not exactly sure when we'd actually bid this out, but I'd like to move forward with getting it designed and ready to go, once that project comes online. So staff recommends that Town Council approve the land dedication and funding from Shay Holmes. If you have any questions, I'd take them now.
Great. Counsel, questions? We'll start with Councilmember Hendricks.
No questions.
Councilmember Polk?
Yes, I do see that as a vital trail length running north and south there, but what part of that should really be the responsibility of the developer for that trail construction? Is there anything in the agreements that would require them to commit more to the construction side of things?
Well, they're going to commit the $208,000 for the sidewalk.
I know, but looking at the total cost of that, that's.
Yeah, and that's really, that was their requirement. They were able to find ways to meet their open space and trail requirements within the stepping stone project, so they didn't really have to do anything per their PD. And then the value of the land, of course, they're giving that away for free, so that, I think that's a real bonus for the town, is that we're acquiring the land at no cost. So I think that's really their funding commitment towards the construction of that trail. And then it also serves, you know, as you said, that it creates that loop between the Cherry Creek Trail and the east-west trail.
The other thing I'm going to ask is, have we looked at any grant opportunities? There's a lot of money coming into Colorado for grants, whether it's, you know, this kind of infrastructure development or other infrastructure. Have we looked at anything like that?
I have not looked at any for this. I know there's state trails grants, and those are usually about $200,000, very competitive, statewide through GOCO. That would be one option for this project. I don't think we would have a good shot at that, because we really don't have any partners on the project, and they're really into having partner funding for these projects. So that's really the only funding source I could think for grants that we would be able to go after.
I'll find you another one.
Yeah. Yeah, and I'm not aware of any other options we would have to get a grant for this trail project.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Rivero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Collins, I appreciate you being here. And maybe this is a question more for Stormwater, but the trail underpass, the Main Street Bridge, if you will, was built prior to the reservoir, and the requirement for Stormwater passing through is thankfully narrowed, as Director Williams pointed out many, many years ago. Does that allow us to keep the bridge as is, and we just move some of that riprap and put the trail right next to the creek, if you will? Excellent. Thank you very much. That at this time is my only question, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Barrington?
So if we were to, I mean, have to buy that, what would the, what would we have to pay for it? Not that we would, but I just, do we know what the value of it is?
I don't have an appraisal on the property. We'd have to get an appraiser to do that.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, so I can't give you, I hate to give you a number off the top of my head, but it depends on what they would value the land at and what the developable areas, which isn't, which isn't a lot, but it's not like you're, because there is some floodplain associated with it.
So then, other than the cost, the $320,000, is there really any other downfall to this?
No, I think it's a really good value for the town. You know, it's an open space that, you know, is along a creek corridor, and it also provides a regional trail connection, so I don't see that there's a, any negative or downfall for the town to acquire the land.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hefta?
Yes, and just out of curiosity, how did, how did you arrive, or did you come to the conclusion of $208,000 for the construction of the regional public trail from Shay Holmes?
So that was the actual cost to install the sidewalk on the east side of Chambers when the town built that, and they're reimbursing the town for that. So that was, that was how we came up with that.
Thank you for clarifying.
Great. With that, I am going to open this up for public comment at 8:28. Anybody wishing to make a public comment on this agreement in the room? Or online, Chris?
None.
None? Okay, so we'll close that at 8:28. Counsel, any further questions or comments on this? Josh?
Yeah, I just, I believe some kudos, first and foremost, to Shay Holmes. They are definitely partners in Douglas County and have always realized our need and our want for open space and recreation, and I am happy that they went the route of deeding this to the town. As much as I love my county, I prefer that open space to land in our quiver and not the counties, and we can build that regional trail to match what our citizens would look forward to. Second, to engineering, I know that Mr. Hudson has been working on this tract for many, 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 many years. I'm sorry, Mr. Collins, I don't want to take anything from you, but it's a long time coming, and I'm glad it's finally going to be part of the town, and we're going to be able to maintain a quality piece of open space and maintain that corridor. So again, kudos to staff all around for a job well done.
Councilmember Polk?
Oh, I'm fine, I've asked my questions.
Okay. Councilmember Hendricks?
Just a great addition to the town, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Barrington?
I think anytime we can acquire open space, especially at that price, it's a good thing.
Councilmember Hefta?
Yours, thank you for a job well done to your entire team.
All right, with that, I will entertain a motion on this agreement?
I will finish what I started. I move to approve the dedication agreement with Shay Holmes for tract Q property.
I'll second.
And motion is made by Councilmember Polk, seconded by Councilmember Hendricks. Rivero?
Aye.
Polk?
Aye.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes five to zero. Next up, O'Brien Park Playground Equipment. Mr. Collins?
Yes, thank you. So this item would normally be on a consent agenda for an agreement, contract award, but we felt like, you know, with O'Brien Park Playground being at the center of town and a very high-profile project, we'd like to give a little bit more information on this. So this project was originally budgeted in 2019, and went through a community process, had two community workshops. A preferred option was selected from that community meeting, a hillside adventure concept, and then the project was put on hold. And so that sat for, you know, two years, and then we rebudgeted it in 2022, and now we're moving forward with actually getting the construction of this project moving forward. And really, the purpose of this request is so that we can order the playground equipment a little prior to a construction contract. And the reason we're doing that is because I'm not sure what's going on with getting playground equipment and long lead times and, you know, delays on shipping and those kind of things. So we're going to utilize Sourcewell, which is a government purchasing alliance, which is pre-bid, and they go out and they do all the bidding for you. Our, our municipal code allows us to, to use these purchasing alliances, and you actually get a discount on it. And then the other thing that you get is you don't have the contractor ordering the equipment, and they'll usually put markup on that. So we'll save the contractor markup as well if we purchase the equipment directly. And really, what we're trying to do is make sure we have the play equipment on time and, and ready to install at, you know, once the, the playground is prepared for that. So that's really the purpose of this. Next slide. Just to kind of reiterate what we're doing, that red line up there is the, this area we think we're going to use for the construction of the playground, which includes the expansion on the north and the south side. And then there's a small area of parking lot. We've been really cognizant of trying not to take up a lot of the parking lot because of Parker Days Festivals, you know, Brew Fest, there's, there's other, many other events that go on during the summer, and we'll be doing this construction from May through October. So we're trying to keep that as limited as possible. I've been working with Parker Days Festival, and they're, they're very happy with this, this layout. It doesn't impact them greatly. And then if you look up in that upper right-hand corner, there's a staging area that would be kind of in the north side. If you can see that, the pool there, that's that O'Brien North Open Space Area. So we'll kind of keep that staging area up there if they need that to, to run the project. And that green area would be a temporary handicap ramp that we'll put in because we're taking the handicap ramp away from the corner there by the playground. Moving into the site plan. So this was presented at a study session back in November of '21, and we had some comments from council, and really the main comments from council were, you know, make sure we have enough shade, make, make sure we have enough picnic table seating, let's make this ADA accessible, and then let's put in, make sure we have some musical equipment in there. So took those comments along with the comments that we've received from the public and incorporated those into this final site plan. And as you can see, there's four kind of distinct areas here, and I can run through those here real quick. But if you look at the pattern, there, it is fully ADA accessible now. That's going to be poured-in-place rubber surfacing in the two main areas there where you see the tan, green, and blue. And then on either side of that, that's synthetic turf with padding under it to, it simulates grass, but it actually has shock absorb and, under it in case someone falls off a piece of equipment. We did get the musical instruments put in there. And then the main shelter from the last plan you saw is remaining in the middle. There's more picnic tables under that. We were able to use a different style picnic table, which actually increases the capacity. And then to the left of the drawing, there's another blue rectangle there that has another picnic table area, and then we added another one kind of to the right and to the south of the playground as well. So we increased the seating, we increased the shade. There's also some additional seat walls that are in this plan, and then we reutilized the benches that are out there, which there's eight benches out there. So plenty of seating and plenty of shade. I want to go to the next slide. As part of the project, we're also doing some, integrating some artwork into those walls I mentioned. This is kind of in process still. We're working with the landscape architect on how this really looks. It's not finalized, but there'll be some sandblasted areas that kind of tell the Parker Town history, which will go around that oval. And then you'll see that in the, in the concrete, and, and that's an example there of how it would be sandblasted into the concrete. And then in the walls, we'll do some flora and fauna that's native to the area, and that'll be in those benches. So we've got a little bit of artwork and, you know, history of the town that will be integrated into this playground. Then moving on to the next slide, this is, you've seen some of this before. This is the main play structure for five to 12-year-olds. Go to the next slide. And it's just another view. We've got some play panels that are ADA accessible, and then you can kind of see that rubber surfacing again there that will be underneath that, that main play structure. Then moving, we have a kind of, we have an ADA, five to 12-year-old play area, which has an accessible swing. And then you can see, you know, most, those things are very accessible for people in wheelchairs, and that, that's a five to 12 area on its own. And then we have a two to five, which again has kind of tot swings and, you know, spring riders and then balancing and a structure with slides. And then the hillside play, which is one of the things that, one of the concepts, that's the one they chose, the, from the community, has things to climb up and down the hill. There's a hillside slide and then also a climbing wall that's integrated into the hill as well. That slide. And our revenue for this project, moving into the financial impact, is 1.6 millions budgeted for 2022. The main play structure equipment's 338,900. And then rounding up a little bit, the estimated site work construction and remaining equipment is 1,661,100. So basically estimating the cost at around 2 million. We haven't budget, or we haven't bid this yet, so we don't know. So again, another, unfortunately, I'm, I'm coming to you with another anticipated shortfall. Again, we have spring supplemental coming up, probably, we'll, we'll go ahead and ask for that additional funding in there. And really, to make this kind of a premier playground for the town, the, the additional shade structures, the seating, the fully accessible surfacing, that added some cost to it as well. We had wood chips in there before. And then, of course, we're looking at the potential for the increased construction materials costs and labor and all those things. So we're, so I think it's going to be that much over. I just wanted to give you and be transparent with you that you're going to see that supplemental come before you here in March. And there, and again, we have the, the fund balance and also cost savings from 2021 projects, so this isn't impacting anything in our overall 10-year plan. Our anticipated schedule is we've got the site plan submitted right now. That's going through planning. It's nearly approved. We'll complete those construction drawings as soon as that's signed off on, do the supplemental budget request, we'll bid the construction project, award the contract, and then start the construction in May through October, and I hope it doesn't take that long, but just being a little bit conservative. And the reason why we're building it in the summer is because there's some, that poured-in-place rubber surfacing has some temperature-sensitive qualities to it, so you have to have that in before it gets cold and the temperatures change. So we're doing that, and, and it's a lot easier to build in the summer, too, trying to do it through the winter and keeping it closed all the time. So staff's recommending the Town Council approve the use of a Sourcewell to purchase the playground equipment for O'Brien Park Playground. If you have any questions, I'll take them now.
All right, council, I will open this up for questions, not comments, so save your shade comments to the end. But Laura, we'll start with you. Councilmember Hefta, questions?
No questions.
Councilmember Barrington?
This is a comment with a question. So, so I, I see that you're already over budget, but would there be any other opportunities to work with the cultural department? And I, I love the art that you're already incorporating into this, but would there be any other opportunities to work with, with them, to, to add some more artistic elements to, to what, what's already going on here? And is it set in stone already?
Well, we're kind of moving forward on a, a fast track right now. I did talk with Carrie about maybe doing some smaller things. There's some, some things we could do. There, on, on the walls, there's some skate stops, they call them, and you can do things like make those leaves instead of just a, a round kind of ball that, you know, that kind of thing. So I did have that conversation with Carrie, and I think we're going to look at doing a few of those things that don't cost a lot of extra money, but could add a little bit more of the artistic element to it. But we don't, right now, have a budget to add any large sculptural or do anything maybe different with the shelters or those kind of things. I think we're kind of locked into the plan as we have it now, but, and, and knowing that we have those artistic elements, we have the, you know, the, the playground surfacing, you know, is the three different colors, and I reviewed that with Carrie, and she, she thought that was really neat that we did all that. And then the structures are a little bit more iconic and a little bit different than what you'd normally see out there. So I think we're, we've met some of those goals. And then for future parks, trails, and open spaces, we're going to work a little bit harder to try to upfront this one. We didn't have that chance to kind of get that upfront art worked into it. So we'll look at those in future playgrounds and other areas.
All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Hendricks?
With the shortfall, was there any one particular thing that stood out or just a combination of?
I think it's just a common, well, one, prices have gone up since we did that original estimate over a year ago. Two, we did add in a couple additional shelters, picnic tables, those kind of things. And then the, the rubber surfacing's not cheap. It's very, it's a lot more expensive than doing the wood chips, but it does give you the full ADA accessibility.
Thank you.
Councilmember Pogue?
I've got an unusual question. In the play area for the two to five-year-olds, I've never seen a climbing structure that looks like a Star Wars creature. Is, are the sides that are on that to prevent the falls for the kids or what?
Yeah, it's, it's just kind of a newer, updated look to this type of equipment. And, and yeah, I think it, I think it'll be kind of neat because it's a little bit different than kind of what's out there now.
I saw that. It reminded me of Star Wars monsters.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Councilman Rivera?
Thank you. I appreciate the new approach of, of going to a buyer's agent and, and using, you know, that approach to try to get a head start on the equipment. With that said, does that hinder maybe somebody putting a bid in because they're going to lose that margin? Do you see that? And have we done this in the past, or have you done this in your experience in the past of cutting out the contractor and buying the equipment ourselves?
So what these purchasing alliances do is they go out and they bid it. So all, all the playground manufacturers have an opportunity to bid on those contracts, and then they select the, the best qualified and best price. And then they're on a contract usually for three years that you can, you can use these procurement services. So there, it doesn't really, it gives everybody a fair chance to bid the equipment upfront, but it doesn't, it doesn't affect the contractor necessarily that's installing it. They're still going to get paid to install the equipment.
Okay.
We're just going to buy it and supply it.
Is there a chance that the equipment would arrive prior to the construction?
No, because if, if I can get approval of this, we can, we can time exactly when we want to buy the equipment. And I've already talked to the vendor, and they said they can hold the equipment and deliver it once we are a little bit further along with the construction.
Okay.
And not have to have it sit at the site.
I always think it could sit at Pwok and...
Yeah, and, and that was the other thing. We don't want to handle it twice.
Great. I, I just have one question. Director Colton, when we were talking with the disabled advocates, this has been like three years ago, they had talked about a lot of landscape around because they had the, the wanderers, the runners, if you remember that conversation. They didn't want to put up fences around, but they wanted more lush landscaping around the playground.
Yeah, the perimeter.
For the, for the, is that incorporated into this plan?
That is not incorporated into this plan because the P3 project that is bringing into consideration the perimeter, the entire perimeter of O'Brien Park, that would take into account that those plantings to, to beautify the perimeter.
Okay.
Both to the west, the south, and to the east.
And to keep, keep some runtime from the playgrounds?
Serving as a barrier as well.
Okay.
But yeah, not, not directly part of this.
Not in this one, but in next, okay. All right, awesome. All right, with that, I'm going to go open it for public comment at 8:45. Anybody wishing to make a public comment on the O'Brien Park Playground equipment? Chris, do we have anybody online?
None.
Okay, we'll close that at 8:45 and bring it back to council for any comments. Now your comments, Councilmember Hefta.
Well, it's, it's so beautiful, so thank you so much. I mean, I've counted right now about eight different areas, at least, where folks can sit and enjoy watching their children play in the shade around all the parks. So, and the ADA compliance was greatly appreciated, working so hard on that, along with the musical instruments. I just want to comment that investing in parks for a community like Parker is extremely important, and, and that cannot be understated. We, we have a lot of children in the town of Parker, and the park is the showcase of the community. And with these revisions, this park will rival that of Philip S. Miller. We were going to draw more people into this town to come to our town, to enjoy our parks, which is what we want. A lot of people from the surrounding communities come to Parker to enjoy the amenities we have. So this is, this is just absolutely beautiful, and thank you for, your whole staff for working so hard to take, take into some revisions that I may have suggested at that meeting. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Barrington?
May have suggested?
Did suggest.
Getting feisty.
So I'm, I'm, there's just so much about that presentation that I'm really excited about. Great job. And just the fact that you already are incorporating some, some of these artistic additions, I guess, into it, like the musical instruments, and I just, I'm excited about that. And it's, I'm just, wish I would have spoken up sooner about maybe some of like, some of the, what we've seen in other communities with, with their shade structures and making those into a, a work of art. And so I just would love to see that, some consistency in, in the artwork that we do all throughout town. So I would, I'm just happy that you've already talked to Carrie and, but, because I, just what we've seen in other municipalities, I know that there's a lot of opportunity, but I'm excited about what's going on here, and great job.
Councilmember Hendricks?
So many memories at O'Brien Park. Taking my kids there 18 years ago, well, they weren't born yet, but 14 years ago, let's say. I'm, I'll be sad but also excited for the new additions and, and reimagining things. So thank you for your efforts.
Councilmember Pogue?
Yeah, one of the things that strikes me as unique is you've separated the age areas and the playground equipment for those age areas, because I know the younger kids can be totally intimidated by the bigger kids, and by separating the play areas, you've given them a chance as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Rivera?
Thank you. I know that parents like myself who have taken the mistake of going down the center of the greenslide and the tailbone damage that it can do, we are very, very happy to see something new come along. But no, seriously, the inclusivity of the, of the park is much needed. It's been addressed, it's been identified by our citizens consistently. In our, our surveys, citizens have stated parks are the number one need or want or desire or reason for moving here, and O'Brien Park is our, is our centerpiece. It's our diamond, and it's time for it to be, to be done. I see no problem investing monies at the citizens' behalf as their steward. This is well-spent. It will be recouped by the visitors of the park, by the downtown businesses. This is a small investment for a, for a gemstone of a, of a park, not only for the ADA aspect, but I think also for our elders. I have seen many a time when my, sitting in my, you know, young parent life down there, elders that couldn't make the step down from the concrete to the bark, you know, and the little one running, and it's just, you know, trying to, trying to watch grandpa chase the little one and bark is, is a nightmare, and, you know, usually me jumping up and trying to grab the kid. So again, I, I think it's time and, and, and well-deserved, and, and just incredible job for answering the wants of council, but more importantly, the wants of the citizens and going out and asking them what they'd like to see. And I think this encompasses it all. So well done to Parks and Rec on this.
With that, council, I'll entertain a motion on the park playground equipment.
I move to approve the staff recommendation as part of the regular agenda. Second.
And motion is made by Councilmember Rivera, seconded by Councilmember Hendricks. Rivera?
Aye.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Yes.
Hendricks? Barrington?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes five to zero. Two over-budget projects sail through. You got the Colton touch here.
Thank you for your support. Tough act.
All right. Last item on the agenda is the First Amendment to the Cottonwood Highlands filing, number seven subdivision improvement agreement. Mr. Mustah?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Before you tonight is a minor amendment to this subdivision agreement. It's been requested by the developer, who is Lennar, Colorado. With me tonight is Adam Coats with Lennar. I think he would like to briefly address the council following my presentation. So just as a refresher, a quick vicinity map of the Cottonwood Highlands development. Filing seven is shown here in the yellow shading. It's generally located at the southwest corner of Cottonwood Drive and Jordan Road. Filing seven proposes 104 duplex units. This project also had several key public improvements, most notably the completion of the south side of Cottonwood Drive between Chambers and Jordan. Lennar was responsible for building that entire south side adjacent to their property and then also east over to Jordan Road. So when combined with the Towns Capital Project, the widened Cottonwood Drive east of Jordan Road, we now have a full four-lane arterial, or major collector slash arterial roadway all the way from Chambers to Parker Road and beyond. So hopefully the council's had a chance to drive that. It's a great improvement to the transportation network in that area. Next slide, please. Just a quick note, the reason this is before the council tonight, minor amendments like this typically don't come before you. Most of our subdivision plats and the associated agreements are done administratively. You guys hear the sketch and preliminary plan and then the final plat is administrative in nature. However, this final plat in SI did come before the council in November of 2020. And the reason that was the case is because there was a minor right-of-way vacation that was done with the plat. So that required council action, the agreement went with it, so it was approved by the council. So that's why it's before you again tonight. Next slide, please. The, there are three conditions to the subdivision agreement amendment. The main one has to do with the traffic signal at the intersection of Cottonwood Drive and Jordan Road. That was one obligation of Lennar. However, similar to what Brett mentioned about lead time in the, in the construction industry, Lennar was running into problems getting the steel signal poles delivered. They ordered them, he could tell you exactly, I believe it was back last summer, they're still being delivered. Everything else has been completed, all the other public improvements and subdivision requirements have been met. They actually installed a temporary traffic signal at that intersection. So it has been opened fully to traffic, it's a fully operational temporary signal, but they're still waiting on those final poles. So that is kind of the one thing holding up their acceptance. So Lennar would like to request that we grant them probationary acceptance while they're waiting on those poles so that they can start building homes. Staff supports that with two conditions. Lennar has committed to building it by April 15th. They do have a confirmation date on the shipping now, so they know when they'll have the poles. They think they can have it in by April 15th. And that we will hold all the financial security that, associated with the public improvements until they actually have that installed. So we will maintain our ability, if something goes sideways, to pull that money and build the signal ourselves. Next slide, please. The other two conditions are pretty minor in nature. It codifies two other developer requirements. One is that they've agreed to complete some additional asphalt repairs to the new roadways and some median hardscaping they need to do by June 30th, when the temperature is warm and are more conducive to asphalt and concrete work. And the final condition is there was one internal road to the neighborhood whose surface course, the top course of asphalt, didn't quite meet our testing requirement. So they've agreed to codify with this amendment that they will fully mill and overlay Millhouse Drive prior to final acceptance of the, of the, of the public improvements. And that's it. I'm happy to answer any questions. I know Adam would like to quickly address you following that. Thank you.
Questions for staff? Councilwoman Rivera?
No questions at this time.
All right, Councilmember Pogue?
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Hendricks?
No question.
Councilwoman Barrington?
No questions.
Councilwoman Hefta?
No questions, thank you.
All right. Sir, come on up if you will state your name and address for the record. For our applicants, we give them 30 minutes to speak. You've sat here for now two hours, well deserved. But just as a hint for your arms, I found at the corner of Peoria and Com Park, there's a set of arms out there. I think if you leave a check, you should probably be able to take them. It's only Douglas County.
Adam Coats, I am the VP of Development for Lennar Colorado. You want my address?
If you will, for the record.
Yes, 6185 South Valley View, Littleton, Colorado. Unfortunately, not a Parker resident.
That's okay.
So Alex did a really good job of, of describing the situation and he said maybe I should show up and, and kind of explain some of the extenuating circumstances.
Can you speak to the mic, sir?
Yeah. Sorry about that.
Is this, it's like I'm hearing, okay. Yeah, it should be on. Is that better?
Perfect.
Okay, thank you very much. So as he alluded to, back in June, we received an invoice for the permanent signal. And at that point, we're put on notice that, you know, due to global, you know, shortages, that timeline was to be determined at that point. So we knew how important the intersection was to the town as you guys were, you know, finishing off stuff on the east side. It was also bound to be very important for us. We moved right away to order a temporary signal, worked with staff to, to get that approved, worked with staff to get crossing buttons, you know, put up so pedestrians can use the traffic and it'll operate through the winter as, as anybody would expect it to, to do so. And then went back to, you know, securing the procurement of the, the permanent signal. And so it, it feels like a win for the town of Parker and, and to allow us to, to continue with development is beneficial to the town and the future residents because in these days, you know, anything that we can put into the ground today is at a stabilized price, whereas, you know, months from now, the, that cost gets passed on unfortunately from us to the, to your future constituents. So, and so that's why we're asking for the ability to continue while you hold our security. Excellent. Council questions? I'll start the same. Rivera?
No questions.
Councilmember Pogue?
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Hendricks?
No questions.
Councilwoman Barrington?
No questions.
And Councilmember Hefta?
Just on the, the supply chain issues, can you just elaborate just a little bit on that?
Yeah, so almost any streetlights, traffic signal, anything made out of steel, plastics. Actually, I was impressed to see that your Public Works Department is ordering playgrounds ahead of time. That's exactly what we're trying to do now is secure anything. Unfortunately, some of these signals are made to order and so that, those orders aren't put in until you actually get through all, all of the design. So because of the, the metallic nature, it's hard to, to get that material, but temporary items are, you know, off the shelf, one size fits all for a temporary purpose. So that's able to get pulled off of the, the shelf as it is to speak rather quickly. So.
Thank you.
Awesome. All right, with that, I'm going to open up for public comment at 8:58. So you know anyone in the room? Was that, were they radioing in a comment? Okay, no worries. Chris, anybody? Okay, with that, we'll close public comment for, at 8:58. Council further comments or questions? Councilwoman Rivera?
Thank you, first of all. Is it Coats? Mr. Coats, thank you for your patience.
Yeah, no problem.
I truly appreciate you sitting through and, and learning a little bit about Parker.
Yeah.
Thank you for your work. I, I, I absolutely see, you know, your need here to get started and try to nip some of the cost in the butt and get going on your neighborhood. I do, will say, I appreciate the temporary nature of the signal now and getting that street open as soon as possible. And I see no problem, as long as you meet the staff's conditions, that this agreement moves forward. So well done and look forward to your partnership.
Councilmember Pogue?
I love that road you built, even if I'm going like this.
Very good.
Thank you.
Councilman Hendricks?
No comments or questions.
Councilwoman Barrington?
I think this was just out of your control, so thank you for coming up with the temporary solution and let's, yeah, let's get started.
Excellent. Councilmember Hefta?
Thank you for your transparency on this issue and coming here tonight as well. Thank you.
Much appreciated.
Excellent.